Execute, right.
Okay, to execute, okay, thank you. Is there any other thing, anything else we have to vote on related to those two contracts at this point, Attorney Mahos?
I don't believe so, ma'am.
Okay, so we've taken our action that's appropriate, okay. That is, the next and final piece of the agenda is the communication and information from Dr. Tutwiler. Dr. Tutwiler?
Nothing more to add.
Ready to, uh...
Yep, the committee members have provided the enrollment report for the month of May, and that is all.
Great, thank you all very much.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, or is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call required.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member DeFaul?
Yes.
Number Ford?
Yes.
Member Gaethje?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes, thank you all very much.
Good night, everyone, thank you so much.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Get some rest.
Good night, everyone, thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Good afternoon, my name is Officer Joe with the Lynn Police Department. As we are actively deploying our new Axon BodyWarn cameras, I wanted to share a little insight on how the new technology works. When officers arrive on a call for service, we will press this middle button twice to start recording. You'll know that the recording has started as you'll see flashes of red light along with an audible tone. Now, when the call for service has been completed, officers will click and hold this middle button again for three seconds, and you'll hear another audible tone to complete the recording. When the video is being recorded, all interactions are audio and video recorded. Another great feature of the body camera that I wanted to go over is any officer within 30 feet of the perimeter, if any other officer activates his TASER or firearm, all body cameras within that 30-foot perimeter will activate automatically. I think the Axon Body Camera will be a great addition to the Lynn Police Department.
Здравствуйте, меня зовут доктор Елена Фрейден, и я - adult nurse practitioner of Lynn Community Health Center. Сегодня я хочу поговорить с вами о вакцинации против COVID-19. Вакцина против COVID-19 поможет вам не заболеть этой болезнью. Все вакцины против COVID-19, которые имеются в США, показали свою высокую эффективность. Вы сможете назначить визит, получить прививку от COVID-19 в нашей клинике Lynn Community Health Center. Вы можете позвонить по телефону 781-581-3900 или выйти на наш website www.lchcnet.org. Там вы увидите ссылку на appointment, чтобы назначить.
Company, I think it would be appropriate to make a condition that this is going to be a storage facility and Flannery would not be operating a business there as one of the conditions, so we don't end up having a storage facility and the problem tenant that's been causing issues to stadium condominiums for a number of years. That would be the recommendation in the lot department to ensure that a problem tenant comes to an end.
You want a stipulation?
Correct. And I believe that's consistent with what has been represented to the board that the tenant would be leaving.
Chairman, I'd like to see that in joint with motion.
Okay, so we're gonna have a stipulation that the previous tenant will not be a tenant.
Do you want no business at all there, or do you want just the previous tenant?
Turn them on, just the previous tenant?
I can't think of another storage facility that has two businesses, so I think no businesses outside of the storage facility would be appropriate.
So just anyone that would be, you mean nothing outside the building, no businesses occupying space outside the building?
Okay.
Is that what you mean?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, okay, so that's a stipulation that no businesses will be operating outside of the building. A business could rent a storage space inside the building, would you be okay with that?
Certainly, yes.
Okay.
That's consistent with the storage facility.
Yes, okay, so that's the no business, so it's just no business should be, other than the actual renting of units inside the storage facility on the property.
Thank you.
Want to call a roll, Mary?
Mrs. Crowitz?
She's muted, you're muted.
Hold on, hold on.
Carrie, you're still muted.
Okay, Mrs. Crowitz?
I think I get it. Okay, sorry, I muted myself, so I wouldn't make so much noise. Agree to grant with the stipulation?
With the stipulation?
Okay.
Mr. Giessono, grant with the stipulation?
He's muted.
Is he muted? Mr. Giessono?
Yes, to grant.
Yep, I got him. Okay, Mrs. Curly to grant?
Yes, to grant with stipulation.
Callan to grant with stipulation?
Yes, to grant with stipulation.
And Mr. Wood to grant with stipulation?
Yes, to grant with stipulation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, and the last remaining case tonight is case number 997161 Bachelor Street. Mary, you want me to read, I mean, Mrs. Curly, Jean, I'll read the case for you and then I'll step aside? Or do you want to just read it? Jean?
Yes.
Okay, so you're gonna take, I want to step aside because I have a conflict, I live across the pond from this location, so I'm not gonna sit on it, so.
Well, can you tell who was sitting on this case, besides Mr. Smith?
Mr. Smith.
And Terry? It's Brando.
Okay, are we ready?
I'm gonna sign off, because according to the regulations, I'm not supposed to be listening or in any way influenced.
Um, Rick, we still have to withdraw Grand View.
Okay, why don't we handle that case first then, I'm sorry? That's not listed on my, what case is that?
That's 9972.
Okay, okay, so let's skip to that case first, 9972.
Sorry, Jean.
That's okay.
So, case number 9972, lot number 15, Grand View Ave. So, that case has, there's a request to withdraw the petition. So, could I get a motion?
Some move, Mr. Chairman, without prejudice.
Okay, so thank you, Mr. Callan, for that. So we have a motion to withdraw without prejudice, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, and second by Mrs. Curly, can you call a roll, please, Mary?
Mrs. Crowitz, to withdraw without prejudice?
I agree to withdraw without prejudice.
Mr. Giessono to withdraw without prejudice?
Yes, to withdraw without prejudice.
All right, Mrs. Curly to withdraw without prejudice?
Yes.
Mr. Callan to withdraw without prejudice?
Yes, to withdraw without prejudice.
And Mr. Wood to withdraw without prejudice?
Yes, to withdraw without prejudice. Thanks for pointing that out, Mary. Okay, so I want to step aside now, turn this over to Mrs. Curly, she's gonna cheer case number 9971, I'll say goodnight now to everyone, so, thank you all and take care. Bye, Rick.
Bye, Rick, thank you.
All righty.
Case number 997161 Bachelor Street, petition to Mark Cooper, to permit the alteration of an existing non-conforming two-family structure located on a non-conforming lot in the general residence district to allow the construction of two addition decks located on first and second floor along with the dock with less than the required side and rear yard setbacks and greater than the allotted lot coverage, finding that the proposed addition, decks and dock do not result in any more detrimental effects in the neighborhood. Mr. Cooper?
Good evening. So this is my first time presenting at such a forum, so I'll just, if I don't follow the protocol, please just direct me accordingly, but I've had an engineering drawing and I believe everybody on the committee has a copy of the plans, or has access to it, is that correct?
Well, the access that I have is on my iPad, and the problem with that is, I can't be on Zoom, and you, and so I'm not happy about that, because I want a hard copy of something that's as important as this, I would like a hard copy, but I don't have that at the moment.
Understood, I apologize, I was told that a hard copy, oh, perfect, somebody can share, that's great.
To look at this, this does nothing to me right now, I can't see, three lines, I can't see a thing.
Is that, is who's Mary, is that you sharing the?
No, that's Sun.
Okay, thank, because I was told everyone's, I had submitted the six copies originally, hard copies, and this had gotten dismissed without prejudice, and then I reapplied and I was told that I didn't have to send in the hard copies again because they were still on file, so.
Oh, from the previous meeting you're talking?
Yeah.
That was a while ago, yeah.
Because I had asked if I needed to send them again, and I was told no, so we did send the electronic versions, of course, but if Sun, Sun, do you have the other diagrams as well?
Um, I have you.
So it's, we're looking at diagram A3, okay. So do you want to just go through the pictures of the home first, so you can get a sense of the property, the photographs? So, so this is, this is from all the directions of the house, and the deck we're looking, we're looking at, in the diagram, we'll reaffirm what I'm referring to, but there's an existing deck there now to the right, which we're looking at to the right of the house from the water side, and so basically looking to build a deck over that, because currently I don't have access to the pond from my residence upstairs, and so I have to walk through the house, down three flights of stairs, through the basement, to get out to the pond. So my objective was to gain direct access, of course, one of the benefits of living here is to be able to have access to the pond, and so if you look at the, not the first level of windows, that's the basement below grade, and then the windows above that is actually the street level, so that's considered first floor, and then the third set of windows would be considered the second floor, which is where I'm looking to build a deck off of the second floor, above the existing deck, and with stairs to come down. So if, if you'd be kind enough to go to diagram A3. Okay, actually, one slide back, you had it on the last one. Yeah, there we go, scroll down a little bit, okay, so the bottom left-hand picture is the same angle that we were just looking at from the pond, and you can see the existing deck on the basement level to the right of the house, and then above that is the deck I'm referring to, and then the stairs would come down from the backside of the deck to the street level, first floor, and then from there to the basement level, which is to the pond access.
Can I ask a question, Mr.? Why would you want that big, that big deck and those stairs coming off the second floor? Why wouldn't they come off the main floor of the house? Why do you want it so far up in the house?
Well, it's a multifamily house, so the first floor is actually an apartment.
And you live on the top half of the house?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sure.
So this is a two-family with more than two families living there?
No, it's only two, I have one rental apartment, and then I live upstairs.
So you already have one deck there now?
Well, the deck that we have is only on the pond level, and there's no access other than through the basement of the house.
But you can, well, when you say here, you want to build two decks.
Well, it's really only one deck and a small extension off of the existing deck to extend the level.
I'll tell you what, I'm gonna tell you right now, I have a lot to talk with this, I mean, I think this is awful, awful looking, I mean, would you be willing to do a stair from the second floor to the first floor with a deck on the first floor, to throw that big deck up on the top of the house like that, it just, it just doesn't seem right to me, I mean, it's monstrous down, and you're cramming that all that deck and stair down in there, it's, because, you know, because you're so high up in the house, is the whole reason you want to pull this thing out up there, if you lived on the first floor, this deck would make sense on the first floor of the house, it doesn't make any sense up on the top of the house with nothing below to support it, you know, you're not bringing the deck, you know, are you bringing that same deck down through at the first level?
No, no.
Why?
Because that, there's no, it's hard to explain, but there's no, there's no need, that, I don't need to build a deck for the tenant off that floor, and it would have, it would be very invasive and extremely expensive, and it would really just extend off the driveway. I'm sure you're probably familiar with how close the houses are together on Lothar, on Bachelor Street?
Yeah.
And it's kind of unusual setup with the below-grade, you know, basement levels, so everything kind of just adds one level to the whole structure because of that basement below the grade, but I looked at, and I have designs in the same architectural drawings and putting it off the back of the house, but it just gets extraordinarily complicated over the pond with having to do, you know, structural work and then getting into the pond itself to put extra supporting beams, and that's why I opted to go this route, where there's already an existing deck there with support that we could just add on to instead of, instead of trying to get into some major engineering and invasive, you know, pillars and support beams in the pond, but I mean, in a perfect world, I'd much prefer to have it off the back of the house, right over the pond, but again, the joists run the wrong way, so I can't stir up, you know, the decking into the house, unfortunately, that would have obviously been ideal, it's too big to cantilever, I mean, sorry, to, you know, to put angles, just to support by angles, and there's really nothing to tap into, so that was really, honestly, my only, my only means of being able to have access, and I love it here so much, it's the only thing I'm really missing is being able to be outside from my living environment and then be able to get down to the deck, so it's, it's really.
There's the deck, the deck coming out of the dormer?
Exactly, right, exactly, it would come out right there, and then the stairs would go down the backside, and then.
So it's overheated, because you can't cantilever over the water?
Correct.
Part of your house is cantilevered over the water?
Yes, that's correct, the base, yeah, just the porch itself, actually, that you're pointing at. So.
The, well, your Dutch colonial, is the deck gonna start here or here?
Yeah, right where you're pointing, that's where the base of the deck would come out there. We'd have, we'd have to reconfigure that dormer just a little bit, you know, to obviously accommodate the, you know, the door to get out to the deck. But again, it's strange, because the driveway, there's actually like a basement underneath the driveway as well, so if you look, it's a little hard to tell, but there's a, where my car is parked there, extends another four feet, which is a rubber roof, and, and there would be a, yeah, so that white, yes, exactly, so that white fence that you see, it's sort of half down right now, there would, there would be in front of that, on the same side you just pointed to, so the stairs would come down on that deck, I'm sorry, on that rubber roof, we'd put the fence up behind it, you know, we do the fence, and, and that would be just basically a platform, which would 90-degree down to the deck. That's the existing deck there, that I was looking to extend like three feet.
Any other questions?
But.
I got a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to find out, do you have two means of egress as it exists right now?
We do, and it's kind of strange setup, because.
Wait a minute, I don't want to hear anything strange, you have a primary and secondary means of egress?
Yes, sir.
Where are they?
So if you look at the, there's one angle that's missing here from the house, if you go back to the photographs, I guess it's probably better to look at it that way.
Well, you know, the plan that I seen, I couldn't read it anyway, it's too small, but I'm not in our position of what you want to do, I think it's a good idea, you're living on the pond.
Sure.
You advantage of that, but we have to figure the city, through the city of Lynn.
Sure.
But Mr. Giessono has a point about, you know, about over-designing on that, I don't see a section.
So, so if you look at the bottom.
I don't see a section through that design there.
So if you look at the lower right-hand photograph, there's a stair, there's a staircase that goes from the second floor down to the driveway.
You wouldn't be using it as a second means of egress?
So currently, that is the second means of egress, and that.
Oh, I'm saying, what you're proposing.
Oh, yeah, I would, I would, my proposal would be to get rid of this staircase that you're looking at now, because it's really comes off of a bedroom, it's kind of like a door from nowhere, and we, I'd get rid of that in exchange for putting the other staircase down.
Now, that doesn't answer my question, though, you're saying that you would use that, what you want to build new there, you're gonna use that as part of means of egress?
Yes, sir.
See, you got open stairways, and they should be covered in it, if it's winter time, what do people do on a second means of egress? You know, slipping and sliding on ice? See, you're changing, you're changing the picture of the whole thing, that's why I asked you if you had two means of egress.
Okay.
Right now.
So I'm sorry, I should have, I should have clarified, when you, there's two exit points from the second floor, one is down the inside stairwell of the house, the second is the outside staircase that you just saw in the picture, so, yeah, that right there, that's the second means of egress from the second floor currently, and it is outside, it is outside. Is that it?
We need a redesign here, I'm not against what you are trying to do, but it's unclear to me now, some of that.
Yeah, so, so the, there's, inside the house, there's one staircase that goes to the first floor from inside the house currently, that's it.
From your apartment?
From my apartment, there's one set of stairs inside.
Inside, and is that the main means of egress or the secondary?
It's the only means of egress from the inside of the house, it's from the inside, within the house, that's the only means of.
That means that you can't, you can't get out to a safe place by using that, that means of egress.
If there was, if there was a fire in that, in that stairwell, I'd have to use the one that you're looking at from the outside, that's my second means of egress.
You don't, you don't have that on a plan, showing the means of egress in the existing building, that's what I like to see on a plan.
I see, that's inside, and honestly, I didn't know enough.
But nobody knows that.
Sure, no, it's, it's good to know, now frankly, the proposed drawing is much safer because it's inside my home, it's wide open in the central section of the house, so there's three rooms connected, whereas the existing stairwell that goes outside comes out of a corner bedroom, so I'd have to go into a corner bedroom to get out through the existing doorway, where this one actually would be accessible from three rooms.
See, the problem here is, you have to show a redesign, and I'm gonna make a motion to continue until next meeting, so you can meet that, so you can clear it up a little better.
Can you just explain a little bit, when you say redesign, you're talking about inside redesign or outside?
Well, I don't know, the plan that I got, that was sent to me by our secretary, is difficult to read, there isn't a magnifying glass big enough to see it, and so you need like a 24 by 36 plan of that thing, something big enough so you can read without glasses. There's a lot of construction there, you have to, some of that design, you might have to design in 100 pounds a square foot, I don't know, you have, do you have an engineer?
Yes, we have, yeah, we have stamped drawings, actually, that.
Is he, but is he, is he an engineer or an architect or what?
He's an engineer.
An actual engineer?
Well, actually, he's not an engineer, I apologize, he's an architect.
He's a designer.
I had an engineer review his drawings, though.
Yeah, but I'd like to see that redesigned by, by, not a designer, either an architect or an engineer.
I, I'll be honest with you, I don't understand exactly what you want re-engineered, or what you want to see engineered.
Well, you heard Mr. Giessono, and I agree what he says, that it's, it doesn't look proper there.
So you're referring to.
You gotta sharpen up your pencil on that.
So you're talking about the structural integrity of the deck itself?
Yeah, right, that's part of it, yeah.
What's the other part?
Well, the other part is, how's it gonna blend in with other areas?
In terms of, I mean, there's really only one way, there's not, I can make it a little bit smaller, but it sort of is what it is, I mean, there's no kind of sugar coating it, I mean, there's no other way to get out from that second floor.
We don't accept sugar coating, we accept plans, they can go into the record, they can go into the record, if it's approved.
Understood, and I did spend a lot of money and time, you know, preparing these, and.
I understand all that, I've been listening to decisions like that from people over the years, and we have to make sure it's safe, and it's, and it blends well with the neighborhood, and all of that, so, and you don't, you don't have a plan that's made up by a registered architect or a structural engineer, and that bothers me.
Okay, so just to clarify, if I had an engineer review the drawings and the diagrams and certify that it was safe, would that, it does, that would sound like.
Wait a minute, who did that, you said?
No, I said if, if I had an engineer review the diagram and certify the structural integrity, would that appease your, your needs?
You already heard what I want, unless I keep repeating myself.
So, so, you know, Mark, I can help is, who did the plan, and showed the diagram of where main egress is, and then the egress, the second egress within the, and that existing plan, where it is today, maybe, and then also.
Mr. Wood, we can't hear you, Mr. Wood, we can't, we can barely hear you.
Yeah.
Oh, you can't. Yeah, you're breaking up.
I'm sorry.
But, sir, if you get, if you get your drawings stamped by the engineer, we can't, it's not our jurisdiction to make comments, it is, IST has to deal with you after that, we can't go into detail, construction details, how do you frame the building, how you design the space, that's not really what we're here for. So if you're drawing, it will be stamped.
That's your opinion, listen, I'm gonna tell you, and this, I'm not gonna talk about it anymore, that's your opinion, this board doesn't go on opinion.
Right.
We, we make decisions.
That's correct.
All right, so I've said, I'm not talking about, and.
I think part of the problem is it's complicated, multi-level deck, and I think it helps, or if you could clarify with a little diagram, trying, you know, the, out of the building, and the secondary, and also the new vernacular secondary, and the stairs is gonna, I don't think you're gonna get a street drawn correct.
I know what you're talking about, you know what I'm talking about, I told you, have like a 24 by 36 drawing of this, what you're trying to do in that area, so you can properly read it.
That's Mr. Wood and Mr. Callan.
Any changes that you can make?
I did send those in originally with my application, the large drawings, but I just, again, I obviously don't want to create a big problem here, but just as far as it relates to the egress, nothing's changing as far as.
I'm on Zoom, I'm on a meeting, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, nothing's changing with the egress, in fact, like I said, we're improving the egress significantly by making it accessible to a bigger section of the house, there is no second means of egress from inside the house currently, the only way to make a second means of egress is what was done and exists, which is the outside exit from the second floor, so that exists now currently, and that staircase on the upper right-hand picture, what we're looking at, so basically, if you just took that and flip-flopped it to the other side of the house, that's basically what we're looking at, so now we'd have, instead of that access from that door, which is in a corner room, you would have access to, from the new entrance, or the new off of the deck, which is a much bigger area, and it would go to two levels instead of just one.
You should show all that on a plan of the existing house.
It does, actually, that's, it does show it right there.
I can't see it, and I'm not talking anymore on it, Mrs. Chairman, that's all I have to say on it.
Okay.
I'm not against him using.
I'm sorry you can't see it.
Mr. Cooper, will you clarify something for me?
Sure.
I was there on Sunday, and there's stairs that go down, and I rang the doorbell next to those set of stairs, and the woman said. And I rang the doorbell next to those set of stairs, and the woman said that you were on the other side.
Correct.
Sixty, okay. Is there another set of stairs that goes down on that side?
So, I, actually, I didn't know who was here, I guess it was you. Um, so if you're looking at the house from the street, the, the door that you rang on the right-hand side of the house, looking at the street, um, is the apartment, that, that one right there. Yep, and there's a set of stairs. It's actually a shared stairway with my neighbor. And that goes down to the, um, the pond level from there. And there's an entrance into the basement, actually, there's two entrances into the basement, from the right-hand side of the house. My, my apartment is on the left-hand side of the house, in the upper right-hand picture. So that's, that's how I access the house. There's a staircase from inside that, that goes to the second level.
So there's no outdoor staircase like there is on the other side?
Correct. The only staircase is above, uh, is above the doorway that, that we've been talking about, right there, yep.
Well, you had a note on your door. Instead of, you're looking for signatures for someone to go down the stairs.
Right.
I went down those stairs again. I rang every bell, I knocked on a door, and, and, and nothing. So I am so confused, that I, I don't even know where we are anymore, up, up, up the future. This staircase, and that staircase, and this door, and that door.
It's a very comp, it's a very complicated house. There's, I have an office downstairs, um, that, uh, that I use during the week, Monday through Friday. So if you were to have gone down there on the weekend, nobody would answer the door. It's really just for delivery, so they know where to go when they're delivering a UPS or FedEx.
Well, I mean, I, I figured it was Sunday, and you probably just weren't home, because I rang your doorbell at sixty-one.
I, I was not, I was not home, you're correct.
I think you were.
Yeah, my daughter graduated from college, so.
Cool, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Um, so yes, I, I'd heard we had a visitor, but yes, it's, it's a little confusing, this house. There's lots of entrances and levels, and that's why I'm actually trying to streamline by having a, a more direct, um, access to the pond, and not have to go, like I said, through three flights of stairs, through an apartment, you know, or an office, um, through, you know, around the hallway to get out to the, the deck. Um, it, it really diminishes significantly the the benefit of living on the pond, 'cause I, I can't go outside my door and, and get to the pond, which is my objective. I mean, I've been here five years, and I've been saving up, you know, to try and do this. And, um, you know, it's, it's a huge goal of mine to be able to accomplish this. And I obviously did spend a lot of time on the drawings, and I'm not changing the outside second means of egress at all. Um, like I said, I, I feel it's safer in this design than the current design. Um, so, so yeah, it's, I, I don't know what, I mean, I can understand if you need more clarity on structural design, of course, I wouldn't, would have it stamped before, we'd have to get a building permit, and we'd have to have it approved and signed off by a inspector before any construction was, you know, started, so I'd- Um, but I mean, as far as the design goes, like I said, I'd love to have it come off the back of the house, that would be perfect scenario for me, but I, I can't imagine what this conversation would be like if we were talking about putting, you know, beams and, you know, pillars and, um, sonotubes and all those things in the pond. Um, you know, I'm probably one of the only houses that doesn't have, you know, access. If you, I mean, I, I'm paddling on the pond almost every day. And I, I pretty much know every other house, and trust me when I tell you that, you know, I put, this is gonna be safer than a significant number of homes that exist currently, and obviously, anytime you do something from scratch, you have the ability to do it right. And that's how we would do it.
Well, do we or do we not have plans that are signed by a structural engineer?
Not a structural engineer, a, a certified architect. We did have an engineer look at it, but she didn't sign off on them.
Well, I, I, see, I, I can't go along with that.
I have no problem. I have no problem. Yeah, I have no problem getting an engineer to look at and to sign off on the plans.
Oh, I think you need to do that.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
So just, just, just for my own, just for my own clarity, is there anything else that the board would, um, like to see before I, you know, get that done and come back to you?
Well-
I just wanna be, I wanna be prepared, you know, next time.
Mr. Calvin, is there something you want?
Oh, uh, if, if I, uh, think of it, I'll bring it up. You can relay it.
We'll make sure to have big drawings for you, sir.
It is only for me, it's for the whole board.
Absolutely.
Well, then we'll take a minute and see if anybody wants to call in in favor of this project. Anyone in favor? Do we have a phone number, in case it's not on the screen on TV, that we can give to people? Well, I hope the phone number's on TV then. Here we know phone calls, and it's closed for those wishing to speak in favor. Anyone wishing to call in in opposition, please do so. Here we know calls in opposition, what is the wish of the board?
It's the next regular meeting.
And, and with what stipulations? What would you like him to do?
The stipulation, he knows, the petitioner knows. But I'm just saying, he's gotta show most, uh, clarified uh, type of plan, and, and stand by a structural engineer or, or a registered architect.
Okay.
And, and, and if there's, if, if there's two ways, two means of egress, there's a power, and I wanna see it in relation to this.
Any one second?
I'll second it.
Well, she made my Mr. Calvin, it's a good of Mrs. Kravitz, to continue this case till the next meeting. And for the gentleman, for Mr. Cooper, to have, show us two means of egress, and have two, uh, plans from a structural engineer.
Okay.
Please call the roll.
Jean, do you wanna redesign on this too, or no?
No.
Mr. Giasono? No, no, Mr. Giasono?
No.
Okay.
Well, I mean, Quiki said, i- i- if, if, if it's, if it's got, if it's really gonna go, well, let him do it right, you know what I mean? It, it, you know, that, that's my opinion, and, and, and the butcher, it's not gonna, not gonna do anybody any justice, so. If he, if he's gonna do it, let, let him appreciate it and do it. I mean, if, if the neighborhood was up in arms, I, I would feel differently about it, you know. And believe me, I know those neighborhoods, they do get up in arms real quickly if they don't like something, so. I mean, if, if, if his neighbors don't care, and it's what he wants, I, I mean, I really don't, I mean-
Have you talked to your neighbors about this project?
I have intermittently. I, I'm not around that much, but I have talked to my neighbors. Unfortunately, one of my neighbors just passed away. Um, and, and we have a very, very, we had a very close relationship. Um, I used to use his doc before I, you know. Um, and my other neighbor, we all, everybody gets along very well here, so. I'm very lucky.
Well, Mrs. Curly.
Yes.
Mr. Giasonos, uh, statements are well taken. And thi- this is something that I wanted to publish safety uh, document. Showing the inside as it exists now, and what he wants to do outside. Other than that, I wish him luck.
Thank you, sir.
Well, my personal feelings are, everybody should have a home and have something wonderful. And you live on the pond, and, and if I were you, I'd feel the same way. However, it has to be safe, it has to look good, it has to conform to everything else. And I don't wanna see you fall and walk into the water.
No. I appreciate, I appreciate that.
What is the wish of the board?
We, we have a continuation. I'm taking a vote, Jean.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Smith, to continue to June first?
Yes, to continue.
Mrs. Crowitz to continue?
Yes, to continue.
Mr. Giasono to continue?
Yes.
Mrs. Curly?
Yes.
Mr. Calvin?
Yes, they continue.
Sorry about that, Jean.
No, you were right.
Okay.
Continue to the next meeting of June first?
Yes.
Does that give you enough time, Mr. Cooper?
I will do my best, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board Appeals Meeting has now come to an end.
We're adjourned.
Be safe, everybody, we'll see you in a couple weeks.
Okay, thank you all.
Bye, everybody. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Open up the public hearing.
Counsel Walsh?
Present.
Present, Counsel Lozey?
I think we're just going to.
Counsel Lozey? I know he was here. Counsel Chakudis? Present.
All right, so Utilities Committee, you want to, uh, did we just read the location streets that they're looking to do the work on there?
Want me to read them all?
Yeah, I think if we just give them just, just a quick, just a street, thank you, real quick, and then we'll, uh...
Okay, the following. Okay, following locations, Bowler Street, Lewis Street, Blake Street, Essex Rogers Ave, Rogers Ave, Union Street, Union, Washington Street, Amity Street, 147 Broad Street, City Hall Square, Johnson Street, Liberty Street, Market Street, 210 Market Street, Mount Vernon Street, Tremont Street, Washington Street, Washington slash Monroe Street, Alley Street, Byrne Street, River Street, South Common Street, Western Holland Ave, Western Ave, and Fuller Street.
I guess we'll open up the hearing for anyone wishing to speak in favor. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? I think we have Mr. Jankowski from National Grid on the phone. If I, can you hear me there, Mr. Jankowski?
Yeah, I can, I can hear you.
How you doing? Can you give us a general overview of, you know, kind of what you guys are doing?
Actually, most, most of those petitions, there's another engineer that's doing it. So, I will kind of have the other person on it.
I'm sorry, I really couldn't hear you. Did you say you're not sure what these, these locations are?
Right, I have one petition involved in that. It's on 43 Tremont Street. That's the old Shaw's location.
Okay, okay. I thought you were the...
The other one, I think those are all, I think, streetlights or antennas, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, does, does any...
So, I don't know how you want to do that. You know what, I could, I could try to get the other engineer and...
Yeah.
Get his phone number, and he can give him a call, he can give you a call or something, or...
Yeah, that's what I'm reading here, most of these that you've got here aren't, well, actually, all of these first ones that are up on the agenda are for going from a manhole to an electrical pole.
Right, yes, correct, that's correct. They, actually, what it is, they just need service for, I think, I feel from antenna, if I'm not mistaken.
Yep. Yeah, they're for, they're for the, uh, the antennas on top of the poles there. All right. All right, stand by for one second for us, appreciate it. These, these locations that are on here are for manholes and providing electricity for some of the 4G cell towers that go on top of the existing telephone poles. Just, I know it's difficult to hear the proponents on the phone here, so, um, I guess, if anybody, does anybody have any input into it or want to discuss it, or you have any questions? No? All right, so, if we have anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Do we have anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Wait a few minutes so the TV catches up. Hearing done, that part of the hearing is going to be closed. What is the wish of the committee?
I'd like to table Lewis Street and motion to approve all the others.
Rest of them, okay, so it's a motion to table the one on Lewis Street and approve the rest of them. That's in form of motion, we have a second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, all right, thank you very much, we'll move on to the next one.
So...
Thank you.
It was one on 43 Tremont Street.
Yep.
That was, um, someone purchased the old Shaw's location, and, you know, they added significant electrical load, we can't use the existing facilities. So, I did a little investigation, and I found a place to put a switchgear and pad on that location, but the petition is to install a conduit. Ninety percent is on the sidewalk, but there's going to be a small portion on, um, on the road itself.
All right, John, we, we took those as a group, so those have all been approved, Tremont Street, so you're, you're all set, all right? I appreciate it.
Okay, all right.
Have a great night.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, bye-bye.
Okay, so let's move on to the next ones here. Actually, some of them are at the same street locations, I think, so if we can just reread that one more time, it's a grant of location to excavate and run, maintain underground electrical conduits. And some of these are poles, from my understanding, talking with the DPW where there's stubs left over from old double poles that they're looking to remove and set poles in there. So, if we could just read the streets again, please? Yeah.
We have Bowler Street, Lewis Street, Blake Street, Essex Rogers Ave, Rogers Ave, Union Street, Union Washington Street, Amity Street, 147 Broad Street, City Hall Square, Johnson Street, Liberty Street, Market Street, 210 Market Street, Mount Vernon Street, Tremont Street, Washington Street, Washington slash Monroe Street, Alley Street, Byrne Street, River Street, South Common Street, Western Holland Ave, Western Ave, and Fuller Street.
Thank you. Anybody wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. What is the wish of the committee?
Motion to table Lewis Street and motion to approve all the others.
The, the one thing I just want to say, add to that, is that I spoke to the DPW Commissioner here tonight, and he's going to be reviewing these as he does all of the street opening permits. I asked him to make sure that if there was any street paving at these locations, that this work would be done before the streets get paved. So, like we see so many times, there's people putting poles in new streets, so, so that that's a form of a motion. A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, all right, carries. Anything else?
No new business.
All right, wish of the committee?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. All right, second, all in favor? Thank you.
Believe you base and means committee meeting. Madam Cluck, please, roll call.
Counsel Net?
Present.
Present, Counsel Staubit?
Present.
Present, Counsel Barton? Present, Counsel Chakudis? Present, Counsel Seer? Absent.
Could you please read the transfer?
Transfer $10,325 to personnel expense to fully fund the FY21 EAP contract, and that the vendor did not furnish until 4/28/2021.
Where's the wish committee? Roll call, please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Staubit? Yes, Counsel Barton? Yes, Counsel Chakudis? Yes, Counsel Seer, absent. Transfer $22,000 to the Council on Aging Salaries to fund the Elder Affairs salary line effective 4/8/21 through the end of the fiscal year 21.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Staubit? Yes, Counsel Barton? Yes, Counsel Chakudis? Yes, Counsel Seer, absent. Order that the City Comptroller Bean is hereby authorized to take the following actions: Correct the amount of a previous available fund from $320,000 to $160,000. Match from free cash and the amount of $190,000 already presented and approved. Certify $160,000 is allowed to the City of Lynn Community Development Department by the Mass Development Finance Agency for the Cultural Facilities Fund Capital Grant Agreement for repairs to the memorial auditorium.
Where's the wish committee? Seconded, uh, roll call, please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Staubit? Yes, Counsel Barton? Yes, Counsel Chakudis? Yes, Counsel Seer, absent. Certify $173,796 to the City of Lynn Office of Counsel on Aging to enhance the Council on Aging activities.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Staubit? Yes, Counsel Barton? Yes, Counsel Chakudis? Yes, Counsel Seer, absent. Certify $25,000 to the City of Lynn Office of Economic and Community Development from the FY21 Travel and Tourism Recovery Grant Program.
There's a second? Roll call, please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Staubit? Yes, Counsel Barton? Yes, Counsel Chakudis? Yes, Counsel Seer, absent. Order resolved, having convened in an open meeting on May 11th, 2021, prior to the closing date, Lynn City Council, in accordance with its charter bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the MSBA a statement of interest form dated May 14th, 2021, for the Shoemaker Elementary School for the replacement of existing roof with a new EPDM roof, with three inches of insulation allowing for reduced heat loss, increased energy conservation, and overall reduced energy consumption as priority. Statement of interest for MSBA Accelerated Repair Program for 2021. Acknowledging that by submitting this statement of interest form, the MSBA is in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the MSBA, or commits Lynn School District to filing an application for funding with the MSBA.
Where's the wish committee? Roll call, please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Staubit? Yes, Counsel Barton? Yes, Counsel Chakudis? Yes, Counsel Seer, absent. Order that pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 58, Section 59A, His Honor the Mayor and the Chief of the Lynn Fire Department is hereby authorized to enter into a Metro Fire Mutual Aid Agreement for a term of 20 years for joint fire rescue and/or ambulance service and all other documents necessary to effectuate to purpose of this order. Further order that the Lynn Fire Department, including any ambulance or other EMS component, is hereby authorized to go to aid another city, town, fire district, or area under federal jurisdiction in this Commonwealth, or in any adjoining state, in extinguishing fires within, or rendering any other emergency aid, or performing any detail as ordered by the Chief of the Lynn Fire Department or the Joint Base Cape Cod Fire District. And while in performance of their duties in extending such aid to the members of Lynn Fire Department, shall have the same immunities and privileges as if performing the same within the City of Lynn.
Where's the... Uh, roll call, please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Staubit? Yes, Counsel Barton? Yes, Counsel Chakudis? Yes, Counsel Seer, absent.
Next, please.
Order that pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 44, Section 53A, the City of Lynn hereby accepts a grant gift from Massachusetts General Brigham in the amount of $70,400 for the purpose of a collaboration between the City of Lynn and the Lynn Community Health Center to assist in overcoming barriers to scheduling vaccine appointments online. The funding will be used to establish a call center for Lynn residents to schedule vaccine appointments at Lynn Tech. Further order that His Honor the Mayor is hereby authorized to execute all documents necessary to effectuate the purpose of this grant/gift and to bind the City of Lynn to said purpose.
Where's the wish committee? Roll call, please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Staubit? Yes, Counsel Barton? Yes, Counsel Chakudis? Yes, Counsel Seer, absent.
Is any new businesses? Emergency? Roll call for all emergency, please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Staubit? Yes, Counsel Barton? Yes, Counsel Chakudis? Yes, Counsel Seer, absent.
Uh, any new businesses?
No new business.
All in favor? Meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Counsel Chakudis? Present, Counsel Calucci?
Present.
Present, Counsel Field?
Present.
Present, Counsel Hogan?
Present.
Present, Counsel Lapierre?
Present.
Present, Counsel Lozey? Present, Counsel Net? Present, Counsel Staubit? Present, Counsel Walsh?
Present.
Present, Counsel Seer?
Present, all rise for a moment of silence. Pledge of allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Except the minutes of the April 13th meeting?
Don't move.
Motion made. Seconded, all those in favor? Communications.
We have two communications from CFO Michael Patino. The first one is the reappointment of Christopher Gata to the position of Director of Assessing.
It's the wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded, roll call.
Counsel Barton? Counsel Chakudis? Christopher Gata, Counsel Calucci?
Christopher Gata.
Gata, Counsel Field?
Christopher Gata.
Gata, Counsel Hogan?
Christopher Gata.
Gata, Counsel Lapierre?
Christopher Gata.
Counsel Lozey? Gata, Counsel Net? Gata, Counsel Staubit? Gata, Counsel Walsh?
Christopher Gata.
Gata and Counsel Seer?
Christopher Gata. Motion carries. Congratulations, Chris. Is there another appointment?
Yep, and second reappointment is for Timothy Leonard as Director of Purchasing.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, roll call.
Counsel Barton? Leonard, Counsel Chakudis? Leonard, Counsel Calucci?
Tim Leonard.
Leonard, Counsel Field?
Timothy Leonard.
Leonard, Counsel Hogan?
Timothy Leonard.
Counsel Lapierre?
Timothy Leonard.
Leonard, Counsel Lozey? Leonard, Counsel Net? Counsel Staubit? Leonard, Counsel Walsh?
Tim Leonard.
Leonard and Counsel Seer.
Timothy Leonard. Motion carries, congratulations, Tim. Communications.
Communications from His Honor the Mayor. Dear Councillors, pursuant to Section 5 of an Act relative to the Department of Inspektual Services in the City of Lynn, I am hereby appointing Stephen Smith to the position of Director of Building and Grounds in the Inspektual Services Department for the City of Lynn effective May 14th, 2021. Pursuant to Section 3-9 of the Lynn City Charter, I am respectfully requesting that the council confirm Mr. Smith's appointment at your May 11th, 2021 meeting. Sincerely, Mayor Thomas M. McGee.
Motion to approve.
Motion made, seconded, roll call.
Counsel Barton? Yes. Counsel Chakudis? Yes, Counsel Calucci?
Steve Smith.
Counsel Field?
Yes, Stephen Smith.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes, Steve Smith.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Stephen Smith.
Counsel Lozey? Yes, Counsel Net? Yes, Counsel Staubit? Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Steve Smith.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Steve Smith. I'm not putting you on the spot, Steve. The other two guys have already been appointed, I've already given them in the past an opportunity to come to the podium and say something. It's okay if you're not comfortable doing that, but at least stand up so everybody can see you. Well, I'd like to thank everyone here, I really appreciate the opportunity, and I'm going to do a good job for you. Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Congratulations. Just so everybody knows, back during the pandemic when we were trying to hide food, Steve was our key guy to get us into the schools so we could put stuff in the freezer, so he did a great job back then. Thanks, Steve.
Dear Councillors, I hereby appoint the following members effective immediately to the zoning board of peers. Terry Crowitz, appointed as a regular member, her term will expire on January 15th, 2024. Patrick Kalman, reappointed as a regular member, his term will expire January 15th, 2023. Sean Wooton, reappointed as an associate member, his term will expire January 15th, 2024. Flori Makua, reappointed as an associate member, his term will expire January 15th, 2024. I am also appointing the following members effective immediately. Justin Anshewitz, 451 Eastern Ave, to serve on the Lynn Housing Development Board of Commissioners. His term will expire on May 25th, 2022. Miki Wilson, 59 Hood Street, to serve on the Public Arts Commission. Her term will expire on April 30th, 2023. Robert Mathias, 66 Purdon Ave, to serve on the Grand Army Museum Board of Trustees. His term will expire on March 30th, 2024. Harry Janus, reappointed as an assistant harbor master. His term will expire on December 31st, 2023. Adam Donnichi, 7 Isabella Street, reappointed to the Historical Commission. His term will expire on February 24th, 2022. Sincerely, Mayor Thomas M. McGee.
It's the wish of the council?
Approve them all.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Public hearings.
First, public hearing is a petition of Starry Inc. for permission to install and operate an unmanned wireless telecommunications facility on the rooftop of the building to allow for internet services to the residents and tenants of that building at 34 Monroe Street.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? If you do, the phone line is 781-586-6783. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Meantime, all waiting, it is the same line, 781-586-6783, if you wish to call in opposition. Not asking you to do so yet, but I'm just giving you the number, 781-586-6783.
I'm going to put you on speakerphone, okay?
Uh, thank you, members of the City Council. Uh, just a, uh, palm scratch, can you hear me okay?
Please state your name, sir, and your address. Hello?
Thank you, Adam, this is Adam Braylard, uh, on behalf of Starry Inc.
So you're wishing to speak in favor, Al?
Uh, that's, that's correct, sorry, I have a lag in my, um, speed in my computer. Sure, it's, yep, sorry, it's Adam Braylard, on behalf of Starry Inc.
Okay, so you called to speak in favor, correct, Adam?
That's correct.
Okay, do you have something you want to say, or you just want us to register you as being in favor?
Uh, I'm, I'm representing Starry Inc., so I can present the application at this time, if the council pleases, or during the, um, subcommittee.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Are there other people? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? I'm going to keep that part of the hearing open. Anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Please call, 781-586-6783. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? I'm going to close the part of the hearing for anyone wishing to speak in favor. This is the last call for anybody wishing to speak in opposition. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. What's the wish of the council? Counsel Chakudis? Motion made. Seconded, roll call.
Counsel Barton? Yes, Counsel Chakudis? Yes, Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field? Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey? Yes, Counsel Net? Yes, Counsel Staubit? Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes. What's the next hearing?
The petition of Michael Quintana, owner of Energy, to open a juice bar with a fitness center at 121-125 Essex Street.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? 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 781-586-6783.
Hi, this is Michael. This is Counsel Chambers. This is Debbie. I'm gonna put you on speakerphone, okay?
Hi, Mike.
Hi, how you doing?
Good. Could you please state your name and your address, and I'll give you a few minutes to tell us what you want to do at that location.
My name is Michael Quintana, and I currently reside at 24 Gina Avenue in San Francisco. I am a personal trainer in a well-disposed... I run my own business, and as part of my business, I will be selling herbalized nutrition products. A nutrition club is a fixed business vacation for me to invite members of my community, friends, and other people I know. It is a place for them to learn better eating habits, learn about living a healthy active lifestyle, and meet other people who are interested in eating better and improving wellness. In this nutrition club, I would be preparing and serving meal replacement shakes, aloe drinks mixed with water, instant tea mixed with water, showing videos about good nutrition, encouraging visitors to dance and exercise, offering fitness instruction, offering dance classes, and finding other ways to get other members in the community to talk about the importance of living a healthy lifestyle. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else wishing to call in? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Not seeing anybody. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to call in opposition? Last call for anybody wishing to call in favor? Anyone wishing to call in favor? Hearing none. That part of the hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to call in opposition? Anyone wishing to call in opposition? Hearing none. That part of the hearing is closed. What is the wish of the council? Counselor Barton?
Motion to approve.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded. Discussion?
Yes, I... Counselor Seer? This is Counsel...
Barton, go ahead. Counsel Hogan?
I just want to say, Mikey Quintana's been a kid that's been in the community for years, and I'm just happy that we're gonna look like we're gonna approve this, and he will be a great asset to your ward in Ward 3. And thanks a lot.
Thank you, Counsel Hogan. Anyone else wishing to give a sentence? Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Staubert?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes. Next public hearing.
We have the petition of a global gas station at 653 Eastern Ave. for a sign permit.
Yes, I'm calling.
Hi. Yep, it's up next, Carolyn. Hold on. Okay. Thank you. Hold on. It's for a global...
The next one for the global? Okay. So, anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Okay, I have you on speakerphone, Carolyn, okay?
All right, thank you.
They calling opposition?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Anyone else wishing to call in favor? 781-58... Are they on the line?
Yep.
Could you state your name, please?
My name is Carolyn Parker. 3 Lorian Ave., Worcester, Mass. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Should I talk now?
Yep, please.
My name is Carolyn Parker. 3 Lorian Avenue, Worcester, Mass. I'm calling for Global Properties. They recently reskinned the existing overhead canopy at the property located at 653 Eastern Ave., and they're asking to put a global sign up on the canopy. That would be the third sign on the property, therefore sending us to you guys for a special
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Thank you, Carolyn.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?